I hereby call the meeting to order at 8 o'clock on Monday, May 23rd. We have our agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Not here.
No additions to the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? I don't see any members of the public in the meeting either remotely or here. And therefore, let's move on to the first item on the agenda, the review of the revised quote for the 2022 Dodge Ram.
So this is, I think, in light of, you know, the world today. The truck as we originally configured it is not exactly how it now is going to arrive. So the original quote was for $48,358. The revised pro quote is $51,953. So it's an additional $3,595. So this truck is scheduled to arrive. It's gonna be here on June 4th. So we are essentially asking the select board to authorize the additional funds. And then also authorize us to do a special warrant so that we can go ahead and have that check. Because we want to be ready to get that truck when it gets here.
Right, right. Now, I didn't understand. Is there a difference in the way that the truck is configured?
Yeah, there's some slight differences. We've been having trouble getting the specific details. So Guthrie went over there today and at least got this. He's currently waiting for some additional specs from the from the salesperson. He unfortunately was not in today.
Okay.
So we can get those details and follow up.
Okay. Amy or John, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I mean, we need a truck and we have to pay for it. There you go.
And the world is what it is right now.
Yes, unfortunately, it is. So.
Guthrie was actually looking just out of curiosity if there were any other options. And he was like, they just weren't expensive. So we're actually sitting a little better where we are.
You can't find anything on the lot because they're not really carrying anything anymore. So you can't.
Pretty much what's on the lot. It's usually sold.
Yeah, in the past, we'd be looking at trucks and then you'd see it was too high, just go another place. Maybe you'd find some places wouldn't honor the state bid price. Because you knew what you used to buy them on, wouldn't say the price.
So, so I understand all that. And I'm a little uncomfortable with buying a pig and a poke, basically, since we don't know all the details about the changes that have been made. So I wonder if we could phrase a motion in a way that gives us some wiggle room? Like paying up to the 54,425?
Yeah, the 51,953.
No, resale price.
Let me see. So let me get my right number here.
Retail is the 54,425. They're actually giving us a discount.
Okay, so the 51,953. So I think a motion would be in order to pay up to 51,953 and to authorize a special warrant pending approval of the road foreman of the actual purchase?
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make that motion? So, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We are on the first item. We are doing the Dodge Ram. And that's gone up in price. We aren't quite sure all the details why. So rather than giving a blanket approval to just pay the new price that we've been quoted, the motion is to pay up to the new revised cost of 51,953. And to do that and authorize a special warrant pending Guthrie Perry's approval.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. So passed. And would you like to chair the meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, next item. Thank you for starting. Sorry I was late in the field. Anyway, so item C, discussion on Board of Argers advisement to board on confidentiality of delinquent tax information. Oh. So.
So currently, we post the letter from the treasurer of the delinquent taxes, including a detailed list of the delinquent taxes. How much is those individual names? So Deb provided some information regarding some kind of precedent and just her opinion as well that we shouldn't be posting that level of detail. So I'm essentially seeking.
Like never?
No, we've been doing it.
No, I know. I'm just saying that once you, once you, the state, the state remotes for tax purposes, they don't, they don't post the person's name and everything until they file a leave of town. Once they file a leave of town, that's public information. So then it can become public. And I think in, and I, and at Arger, when we did it, we would, once we decided to go to tax sale, that's when you post the information about the, about the property. Then you have a right to do it because it's gonna be in the newspaper and yeah.
Yeah.
So what she complained about this beginning?
Her, her letter is on the website.
I know. I didn't realize it was.
Okay.
So I didn't, and I tried to read it, but you know, that's what I got.
I got one of those too, but then I was able to click somewhere up on the left and it opened.
Well, I haven't seen the letter, but I know the previous discussion that we had a few years ago was she didn't like it because you could back, she thought you could backtrack and get other information, but.
Oh, like social security numbers and stuff like that?
No, really to calculate the person's income.
Oh, and the Supreme Court did make a decision on that, that people can't be allowed to, to see the amount of the subsidy that people get due to their income.
Right, because then you put maybe extrapolate the income.
And we're not putting that.
We're not putting that on.
And I did read that today. So.
So that's not a factor because we're not posting that.
Right, so then we're probably fine.
So my memory of this is that we never posted this stuff until COVID.
Oh, no, no, we were posting it very long, but Deb didn't like the fact that we weren't.
We were, because I remember us getting it in the select board meetings and then being very discreet in the way we referred to things. Referring to things by parcel number in our conversations rather than by names in the minutes.
For the most part, we haven't mentioned anybody's names that I can recall.
I think since COVID, I think.
I looked at last year, the list is there with names and amounts.
Yeah, we always go to.
I didn't go back.
But we didn't talk about it or anything.
But we have, I think, in the past year, we have done that. And I wish now that we're televised, especially that we wouldn't do that, that we talked about parcel number. So as far as I can tell from reading the, the Supreme Court decision and the other document that she sent, there's no, nothing that prevents us from publishing this information. But I agree with her that it's just a friendlier way to run the town if we don't publish it. So I would recommend that you email it to us so that we have it to look at for a meeting and that we'd be discreet in the meetings and talking about it.
Emails, emails are public information too.
Oh, yes. So, so the other component of what she asked is that we not give it to somebody who asked for it. And, and I don't think we can do that.
No, I think my understanding is if somebody requests it, yes, we would be required to provide that. Correct. But it wouldn't be on the website. I think her, at least verbally when we spoke, was that it's on the website.
So on the website, I mean, what Carl, what you're saying is that we should just take the names off? We can leave, you know, the parcel number on and the address on, but just take the names off so that it's not automatically searchable?
No, my suggestion is that we not post it at all to the website.
Oh, okay.
Send it out to select board members ahead of a meeting. So everything else, we post on the website for the meeting, but we don't post that. And then we have it in our emails to talk about it.
So if somebody wants that information, then they would have to come to the office to get it, and that's fine.
Not necessarily. You can make a public records request over the phone or by email. They could still ask for it, but it just wouldn't be out there for everybody in the world to see.
Right. I mean, that's kind of, yeah, okay.
In the newspaper, you're on tax sale.
But at that point, you have to go through a process. Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm a little bit confused because we've always brought a list to our meetings of delinquent taxes.
But it's only in the last few years that we've started having the material for our meetings posted on the website.
Oh, I understand that part of it. But as far as this goes, ever since I've been on the select board, we have a list of names.
Absolutely. And I'm not suggesting to change that.
Right. And that's public knowledge. That can be public knowledge.
That can be public knowledge. Yeah. So, so we can post it to the, to the website. That's not a problem.
You know, the website, you can go either way on that. I don't really care.
But if somebody asks us for that list, we still have to give it.
Oh, I understand.
Yes.
It's just like we have the totals in the town before. So you know, we can, you know, but to your point, yeah, I mean.
Well, I remember years when it was by name in the town before. And they were like, well, if you don't want your name in there, better pay your taxes.
Yeah.
It was a deterrent. So I don't.
Yeah.
But I know when I was doing minutes, then I was careful to refer to parcel numbers, the motions to go, even the motions to go to tax sale were made in terms of parcel numbers without the person's name. And of course, we know, once it actually did go to tax sale, then all that is in the newspaper, as you say, but.
People researching records and everything else.
Yeah, the idea is that a lot of these tax sales don't go to tax sale. The, the moving forward on it is enough to get the taxes in.
I don't really have a strong opinion. I mean, I guess if she's worked up about the fact that it's gonna be on the website, I guess we could take them off. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. And like you said, every town does it differently.
They do. Yeah.
Yeah, no, true. I don't think it's a problem on the website. It's a wild jump to get from a delinquent tax collector's, uh, to delinquent tax on someone from their name to figure out their income. I don't get it myself. If you had the information from the subsidy from the state, you perhaps could extrapolate their income.
You would only know, you don't want to be able to know if you knew exactly what their, what their grant list number was. And then what, what the tax, 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 taxability.
I don't, I don't.
Liability was.
I don't see it as being such a big deal.
And it doesn't make any sense. People aren't gonna calculate that. No one's gonna be able to figure it out unless they know what the percentage is.
And if you just know how much they're delinquent, then you know, maybe they had.
They'd have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it doesn't give us much of anything. Everybody else figure it out.
Yeah.
But it's no big deal.
No big deal either way, as far as I'm sure.
Yeah.
So I don't have to do it.
Would you care to sign in? Would you care to sign in?
Sure.
Okay, so what are we gonna do about that? We're just gonna say it's okay not to post it on the website?
Yeah, do we need a specific motion?
I don't think so, no.
We're just altering a process.
Yeah, right.
Okay. No problem. We'll stick to an email.
Yes.
So, item D, discussion on letter response to the MFD. It should say potential election, but sorry. It's election that's coming up. What's that?
Or the one that just occurred.
Yeah, we're not talking about that one. Potential executive session. What's that?
No, just me.
Yeah. Yeah. So we should go on the executive session. And what we can do is we can go to the personnel matter and then do the rest of it later? Or do you want to do the rest of it now? We could do that.
Rest of it now?
Do the rest of it now and then do the executive sections back to back. That way it makes it easier.
Right.
Okay. So the next thing, we'll just skip item D for the moment. We'll go to warrants. We have a regular expense warrant here.
Yes.
Yeah, not very long, I see. Pass it around. Done. This is it?
Yeah.
There's six items here. Okay. And today is 5:23? And I wasn't here for the beginning. Was there, was there other business?
No additions. There's a little bit of other business on the annotated agenda.
Okay.
We added to the other for personnel, the zoning administrator. We have received an nomination from the planning commission.
Yes, okay.
For Tyson Brown.
Yep.
So my thought was we would bring Mr. Brown in to the June 6th.
Yep.
So I guess really the question is, you know, how would you all like to proceed with this candidate?
Right, and that's a good question. So we do have to come up with hours and pay, but we also have to come up with the interview process. Questions? Who's gonna ask them?
Right.
And time.
Well, we have just gone through some interviews, so we have a good basis of a set of interview questions with not all of which are appropriate for zoning administrator. There may be some additional ones. But I bet if we got together half an hour ahead of time and talked about it, we could probably come up with a pretty good list of questions based on what we already have. Does that make sense?
Well, we could put it on our agenda for a certain time and then have half an hour for that rather than moving our meeting earlier.
Yeah.
Just schedule, and then another time for the actual interview, which could follow our half an hour.
Correct.
Right here.
We need, oh. Now, we do realize that we don't have to ask a lot of questions because he's been nominated for the planning commission.
Correct.
But we will have some questions.
Of course.
Yeah, of course.
So the meeting on the 6th starts at 6:30. Would you want to?
No, I don't want to move it up from 6:30.
Would you, what timing would you?
So what we'd wanna do is at some point in the beginning of the meeting, we'd wanna say half an hour or so to develop the questions and then bring Mr. Brown in after that. And we want, hell of, 45 minutes for that, max, half an hour?
You want to do the questions that get himself ahead of time?
Well, it'd be good if we had some sort of questions that we had in front of us to say, oh, we want to ask this one, that one, that one. That makes it quick. We're not gonna, I don't want to sit here and we have no questions in front of us. Say, oh, what are we gonna ask?
Are we gonna be able to see a resume that's gonna be with your question?
Yeah, we have a resume.
I mean, my, my suggestion was that we meet, you said in the meeting, it said before the meeting, for a certain amount of time to just come up with a question.
Yeah, but we should have some questions already in front of us.
Yeah.
From VLCT or whatever.
Yeah. Start with a template. To your point, you've had two recent hires.
Exactly.
So we can take a look at some of those questions.
Right, we can have, you know, 20 questions on a sheet and then we can say, oh, we want, you know, one, 10, and six or something.
Yeah, you want to ask the planning commission to send us a list of the questions they asked?
Yeah, so we're not asking the same ones.
Or maybe so we are asking the same ones.
Yeah.
We might think they're really good ones.
We'll duplicate some of the questions in all fairness because it's similar to get appeal. So.
Yeah. Well, we don't have a lot of choices for ZA at this point. But it is good to ask the question. Yeah, okay.
So with the meeting starting at 6:30, would you like to start with this for that meeting?
Yeah, we can do our usual, we can do a review of minutes, this is agenda, the public comment, then we can go right to our list of questions. And then we can allow a whole hour for the full thing if we've got a bunch of questions in front of us. Should, shouldn't take us long. And then we can have Mr. Brown come in. So from 6:45 to 7:45, we can allow for the questions and having him come in. That work?
And I think in terms of open or closed meetings, when we're coming up with a question, that sounds like a closed meeting. Because that's personnel stuff.
Right.
And when it's the actual interview, I guess that's an open meeting.
Is it?
I don't think they work for.
They work for anything other ones we did, interviews we did before they were.
They were closed. Okay. Okay. Well, that leads to better answers.
Generally, you keep, give us a deep and confidential.
Well, that's right.
Right.
In case they have another job.
Right. So we already have it posted on the website, but.
What?
The name of the person.
Totally.
And we, and we've said it a number of times here.
It's all right.
But it won't go in the minutes.
Okay.
So I can communicate with them maybe like a 7:15 then?
Yes.
Maybe in access. Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
And I will email the select.
Now, the way we've done it before is we did it in person. We had the person that was being interviewed come in person.
Yes, that would be my intent.
And I, that would be best.
I mean, he was in person.
I mean, the members of the select board, of course, could always zoom in, like, you know, Amy is tonight.
Yeah.
And I noticed that Tom manager, city manager candidate, the last two for Berry City, where there are pictures and their names and everything, or in paper. So.
Oh, really?
At least when you get down to that level.
Right, right. And this person's a finalist.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So I guess we're all right.
I think we're fine. Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was good.
Okay.
And the, the office hours, did you want to?
Yeah, the, the only thing there was, we're just, when I first came into the office, I was told that the listers are here from 10 to 12. So you can always kind of count on having the meeting room in the afternoon. But we've had some inconsistent hours lately. We have limited space. So it made it a little difficult to get into this room. But I think that we, I talked to the listers on Friday afternoon and I've discussed it with the team because we just have, with the potential new ZA coming in, we have times where we're gonna need to kind of overlap in this room. So we kind of came to an agreement that either they'll leave, the listers may leave so we can have the, the meeting room space or, you know, we'll cohabitate peacefully and share the space. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew that, you know, we were working through that and kind of trying to balance our, our limited space accordingly.
So on the hours, I think there's gotta be some posted hours for the zoning administrator.
Absolutely.
Two days a week at the minimum.
Yeah.
Some of the work can be done from home, but there's gotta be posted hours. And people know what they are and they can come in and apply for permits. So I don't know what those hours should be.
I think once a candidate has accepted the position, I think we would work through that timing. But yeah, absolutely.
But I think that we do need to be upfront with the candidate to say there are some offices.
Yes.
And it should be a minimum of two days a week, or two afternoons a week, or two mornings a week, whatever. So the public knows. And then there will be some time when the candidate can do work at home.
Yeah.
So that was kind of our thought.
Funny that we've gotten to this stage where that needs to be made explicit. Okay, if you get this job, you have to come into the office.
Yeah, well, these days it's like a lot of variables as far as, you know, in person, out person, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the pay thing is the other thing, but that's something we really haven't fleshed out. Do we do that in open session?
No, no, no.
All right. I don't think we should.
No, it's a negotiation.
Okay, we'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that's something that we're gonna have to talk to, talk to among ourselves.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Was there anything else?
That's it. Anything else that I can likely go to executives?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, we have a member of the public that's came in after the public comment period. Did you want to say something, Tommy?
Yeah, I was just a little concerned that the agenda I was on regarding the fire chief. This is not the first contested election. This is the third contested election.
Were we talking about the fire chief?
And I think our department has done a very good job managing its resources and trying to make sure that we run very efficiently. And anybody who's elected chief is a known commodity, including myself.
You served a decade of more as chief?
What's that?
You served a decade of more as chief?
No, five years.
Five years.
And I was one of the contestants. I lost my one.
My question is, I didn't even, I don't even know what's going on here. So it's.
We're not doing anything with chief tonight. Well, I just thought on the agenda.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with the chief. Okay, okay. So a couple of us know no more than you do about what the agenda item's actually about.
Okay, but it has nothing to do with the chief. Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure because there was.
But we don't have anything to do with it anyway.
There was, there was a little bit lying around the first time.
There was a what?
First time there was a contested election.
Oh, this time around.
This time around. And that is not the case. This is our third time.
Well, you've got a long historical perspective with the department. So thank you.
Forty-eight years.
Yeah.
Anyway.
The, the process is what it is. You know, it's a democratic process that the emergency services department engages in as far as the election of the chief goes. Now, you know, that happened. It's history at this point.
I, I agree.
Whether we're happy or not with it, it's, it's history. It was a democratically run election.
Right.
Now, as far as our relationship goes with the fire department, the emergency services, we'll have to see how that plays out. We're, we're just gonna see how it goes.
Right.
And, and like I said.
We do have some concerns.
The majority of the department didn't have faith that things would be as good, if not better, it wouldn't have happened. So.
It was a close election.
Not as close as mine.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right.
It's.
Whatever. And it's a small group of people too, really. So.
There's 20 people. There was 20.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Yep.
All right, so, let's see. So now we can, we've taken care of all other business. So now we can go on executive session.
Yeah, so why, what are we gonna do in executive session? I don't understand.
We're discussing a personnel matter to do with the fire department. Okay, coming out of exec, executive session, no action taken?
Eight thirty-three.
Eight thirty-three. So let's continue on our, let's go to item D. And the potential of sending a letter over to the emergency services facility. So you drafted a letter?
Did you want to let us see it?
I drafted something. I guess, I'm not sure what exactly you all wanted to say.
Okay, so, so there was concern, okay, I'll just lay it out. There's concern expressed by the president of the fire station emergency services that there was personnel running for the seat, open seat, that might not be qualified and didn't have a skill set to represent the interests of the fire department in a productive way. That's what I got out of it. He's concerned. So I thought we should send a letter over. Or he wanted us to send a letter over there to express our concern. So that, that's what.
I guess my question is, is the board universally concerned? And what would the board?
Well, I didn't, of course, we couldn't act on anything without bringing it to the board. So we sure couldn't send a letter. So that's why we, one of the reasons we met is come up with something to, or should?
I agree that when, when the president raises questions, he's a valuable, valuable person. There, valuable contact that we, we need to take them seriously. We can, I'm not in a position to have an informed position about either the candidates. And, and even if I were, it's, it's a different organization. If we want to send a letter saying, you know, we, we value the ongoing cooperation between the fire department and the East Montpelier Select Board and the Calis Select Boards. And we look forward to working with a, a board that is going to cooperate with us. That's fine with me. But that doesn't.
Well, it isn't just a board that's gonna cooperate. It's the board that's gonna run the operation in a, in a safe, productive way.
Good.
And that had, and the board needs to have the skill set to steer the ship. And I'm not sure that, I mean, I do know all the candidates and, you know, there are some candidates that would be appropriate. So I don't know what you wrote. So Jean and I did talk about this and we agreed that we should say something, but fairly innocuous.
Essentially, the paragraph I drafted that said, send the select board understand an upcoming vote to elect a new member to the MFD board. With the change of leadership at the MFD, the select board is concerned about additional changes and future direction of the MFD board. We encourage the MFD to ensure those elected to the board have the necessary experience and qualifications to maintain the quality of the board going forward.
That's great. Perfect.
So if you all are comfortable with that.
Do we thank them for their recent visit to?
I did. That was my first paragraph.
All right.
So I did thank for the recent visit and I said, we appreciate the transparency and desire to foster a stronger relationship between the East Montpelier Select Board and the MFD board. So would you like this letter sent to the?
The chief.
To Larry Brown? Okay.
That's what the request was.
So what's actually the purpose? I mean, I, I don't want to take the wind out, but what's the purpose of this? I mean, isn't that kind of like, hey, you know, you're gonna send a letter that says that you don't want to work well with? I mean, I, I guess I, okay, whatever.
No, no, the letter, the, the first paragraph is just window dressing.
No, I understand that, but this whole, this whole letter seems like it's window dressing. But I guess if, if, if there's some intrinsic, okay, whatever, that's, somebody requested it and we can do it. I just, I don't get it, I guess.
Why we would. We are also concerned about who's gonna be on the board of directors?
I understand that, but do you really think that they're, as an independent entity, are going to look at this vaguely worded thing and say, oh, yeah, you know, we should definitely go this way? I, I don't get it.
They're gonna say, you know, the select board never sent a letter before, before an election. So this might mean something that they are concerned.
Okay.
It's not across the bow that says, we're concerned. We've never done this before. We've never, we've never interfered. We're not gonna interfere with the election, but we're concerned about the election.
Okay.
I, I personally think that's appropriate.
Okay.
We do, that we are concerned, we're concerned. And one of the important personalities that um could be on that board, it could be difficult for them to do the business in a way that they need to.
Well, yeah, I totally get that. I just think that they really have prided themselves on independence, and I just don't really. But I, you know, I guess if you, if you want to state an opinion, then that's the way to do it, that's fine. As long as, you know, it's not so vague that they can kind of, I mean, they're gonna know what you're saying, I guess, okay, fine, whatever.
No, we're saying in that the person that asked us to say something about it, we will be sat knowing what he asked us to do. And that's important, that we are supportive of someone that's been a strong proponent of the fire department emergency services, has done a really good job. We need, we need to be, have him as an ally as we move forward through a process that could be problematic. We don't know. We hope it's okay.
Okay.
We need, um I think I I personally would express this the way we did it, and it doesn't hurt.
Okay. I mean, I don't think it hurts anything, I guess, you know.
Yeah, I don't know any, uh people who are involved, and I think that's good, I'm glad I don't.
Yes.
And um and I do have, and I do think that, you know, they are a pre tiered separately existing corporation that doesn't have to do anything we ask them to do in that regard. But if we're sending the letter, we're just send sending it as a way of saying, this is our concern.
Yes.
Just want to make sure we get the best people we can on the board to go forward and deposit man.
Of course.
Fine, but I don't, I just don't want it to be construed that we're trying to control what they're doing, because we're not. I.
Okay, so, so so I'll push back on that. Um they are dependent on us. They're dependent on our contract. We can end the contract.
For sure.
And so and so to say that we're completely hands off is not the right message. We are the select board, we do control it, we have a a contract with them that we can end. We can end the contract.
Speaking from my my own, from myself, because I don't know anybody who's being, who's running for the board. I don't know any of that, no, those issues or who they are, what their qualifications are. So it makes it harder for me to to support something like that, but I'm I'm willing to do as long as it's innocuous kind of letter.
That's why we did it though.
Right.
We did it, it it it's a twofer. It's innocuous, but it still sends a message, and it doesn't tread too much on anybody's toes.
Right.
I would say half faith.
What's that?
I would say half faith.
You'd say half what?
Faith.
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 Half faith.
The right thing will come out.
I I hope so, um but at the same time, I think we should send a message, and I don't think it's gonna hurt anybody. And if they say, oh, they're interfering with our business, okay, we we are the controlling interest here. And don't forget it. And you know, as we move forward, we'll have to see how it goes, and that's what we decided in our last meeting, we talked about this, we're gonna see how it goes, which I think is fair.